Okay, so it's 6:30. Good evening and welcome to the May 10th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A meeting was held at 6:00 PM in the Council Chamber Subcity Hall, which you guys are currently sitting in, for clarification of the agenda. The following is the official agenda of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Discussion and commission action will be limited to those items on the agenda. Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name for the record. If a citizen wishes to redocumentation of any sort of to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. There is a three-minute time limitation for public testimony to the commission. Eastland, would you? So, the first agenda item is roll call. Eastland?
Here.
Here.
Here, and I did not do any site visits.
And here, I was able to make a site visit to Agenda Item 3 and 4, and I have no, nothing to report.
Here, I made a site visit to Agenda Item Number 3 and Agenda Item Number 4, and I have nothing else to declare.
And we have Crystal Chanda excused this evening and Whitney Fenwick unexcused this evening.
Okay. The commission will continue to move to Agenda Item Number 2, which is the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion by the commission on the approval of the minutes for April 12, 2023?
Done here.
Nothing. I would entertain a motion.
Do you want to make it? Go ahead. I move that we approve the minutes for the April 12, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Hewitt and a second by Frey. Eastland, would you take a vote?
Hewitt?
Yes.
Frey? Yes.
Hartu?
Yep.
Phillips?
Yes.
Root?
Yes. So now we will move to Agenda Number 3, which is a public hearing. It is for the Zone and Comprehensive Plan MAPS Amendment File 23-74-SIS. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Jake Woodward of JW Properties for a Zone and a Comprehensive MAPS Amendment application to rezone a 3.03-acre parcel, more or less, from residential medium-density multifamily to residential high-density. The request also includes rezoning of lots 26 through 28, Block 13 of West Pocatello Townsite, from residential medium-density single-family to residential medium-density multifamily. The current comprehensive plan land use map for approximately 1.34 acres of the 3.03-acre parcel is designated as public. Therefore, the request also includes amending the map from public to residential. The property is generally located at 516 Riverside Drive. I declare the public hearing open. I would like to invite the applicant to come to the podium.
My name is Jake Woodward, and thank you for being here tonight. We're appreciative of your time and of hearing the matter. As you know, we have owned the property for just about a year and have worked very closely with city staff on trying to put together a plan that everyone feels comfortable with and that would be supported by the city. That property, as you know, has sat there for several decades now, undeveloped, and, you know, we've done a lot of heavy lifting with doing a land trade, squaring off the property so that it can be developable. And anyway, we're excited to see this thing forward. Our plan is to develop some housing in the area that I think will bring some, you know, new housing options to that particular neighborhood, which hasn't been done for some time. And more than anything, we've done some community outreach as well. We held a public meeting with the neighbors where we brought a food truck on-site and sent out notices and had several community members come, and we essentially provided dinner for folks that wanted to come look at our plans and to provide feedback. And so we tried to get as much kind of feedback from the community as possible. A lot of that's been detailed in the letter that was written, but generally it was received well. You know, we probably only had, of the 70 or so people that showed up to have dinner, there were maybe only six or seven serious kind of inquiries about what we were doing that provided some good feedback. And so we've tried to take their comments and implement them into what we're going to do ultimately. But yeah, so we're excited for the project. You know, as a developer, you kind of sit in the dark and wonder what people are thinking. So we'd be really interested to hear actually some comments and feedback from you as the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the public. Because again, we don't have anything set in stone, but there is a lot of heavy lifting that has to happen prior to even getting to the point where we can submit plans. So as it's been discussed, we did a land swap. We're trying to get the land entitled appropriately, so that's what we're doing here tonight. But I would just, you know, yield my time back and answer any questions that you guys might have and see if we can have some productive dialogue.
Okay, thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant?
I have questions.
Yes.
So can you give us some insight into what some of the comments you received back were at that public meeting?
Yeah, I think...
Neighborhood meeting, I guess.
I'll talk about, yeah, I'll talk about kind of the positive and the negative. Generally, I would say the majority of what was discussed was really positive. People liked the idea of that parcel of land finally becoming something other than like a dumping ground. There were some safety concerns, you know, with the neighbors saying, "Yeah, my kids ride the bike through, their bikes through here. We walk through here, but it's, you know, it's not protected. There's no signage. It's just kind of overgrown." And so there was concern about, you know, potentially some safety. And then they liked the idea of seeing something happen there finally. I know that there, over the years, you know, people have proposed things, but... So generally, it was positive. You know, some of the feedback that we got is that we're going to try to incorporate some access into the trail system from our project. You know, a lot of the families said that they spend time walking in the evening, but again, along kind of the roadway, there's no, there's no public, there's no public sidewalk. It's just kind of open roadway. So as part of our development, you know, we're heavily contemplating cleaning that up, providing sidewalks and so forth. So again, there's kind of better access to Sacagawea Park into the neighborhoods and into the trail system so we can kind of bring everything together. So that was some of the, some of the good stuff. I think some of the negative was that there was concern that this was going to be low-income, government-subsidized housing, which is not our intent. But that was made clear that they didn't want like Section 8 housing or, you know, government-supported housing. So we've obviously taken that into consideration. That hasn't really been something we would consider at this time. So beyond that, there wasn't a ton, other than they wanted to see site plans. We kind of produced what we have designed up to this point, but everything remains totally flexible, but just trying to, trying to get as much information as we could as to what would be supported.
Thank you. I have another question for you. Can you talk to me about the land swap that you went through with the city that brought about kind of the details about that? I would normally ask a planner, but the ones that we're kind of in charge of this right here today.
Yeah, so it's kind of better articulated if you're looking at a map, but essentially what I can describe is that, is that the parcel of ground that I purchased actually included a portion of the levee, and the property line actually went out into the middle of the river. And adjacent to my property was, were several kind of remnant parcels, as I would describe them, that the city owned, and they were chopped up. There were like, you know, maybe four to five or six kind of remnant parcels that were completely undevelopable and... And so I have an interest in taking those parcels because it would better square off my property along the public right-of-way or along the city road. And I don't want the liability of having, you know, a levee and my property line going out to the middle of a river. So this was maybe last year sometime. I'd met with the city and said, "Hey, I think we can probably work together in doing this land swap. It benefits you because you then have better access to the levee, which, you know, the city's going to have to maintain, and then I can pick up these remnant parcels and clean up, you know, effectively clean up those parcels and make them again something that's developable." So that was the proposal, and it was met, you know, very positively, and that, you know, went all the way through City Council and was approved. So we finally have now kind of completed that land swap.
Okay, and my understanding is that there's still some right-of-way issues to be worked out?
Yeah, and so we have to do things in kind of sequential order.
You do, yeah.
And now that we've completed the land swap, our next step really is to identify what those, what those deed restrictions are or those encumbrances on title are. And we'll address them each individually with the city, and we'll determine which ones need to be vacated, which ones can stay. But that's, again, that's another kind of step along this process of just cleaning, cleaning up title.
Okay, all right. Is there any concerns that you have with the wetlands that the city has put in place next door to this, just to the north of that? Any, how are you, what's your ideas there? Because it needs to remain a wetland, so...
Yeah, specifically, so if you look kind of between my parcel and Sacagawea Park, there...
There's that artificial wetland.
I don't even know what that is.
It's not artificial wetlands.
Okay, artificial wetlands. We don't have concern with that.
Okay.
You know, the city's done a really nice job with that trail system. In fact, we were just there prior to the meeting and noticed a lot of families and bike riders and so forth kind of utilizing that. It was, it's really great to see that. What we were more concerned about is that a portion of the land is actually in a floodplain. And so in conjunction with everything else we've been doing, we actually are proposing an amendment to the floodplain map. It's called a clomer. And so we have hired a water engineer, for lack of a better term, to produce some analyses on how to get this out of the floodplain. And so all of that, and again, this is way over my head. I'm not like a hydro engineer, so I don't understand floodplains and, you know, what has to happen exactly to raise a site out of a floodplain. But I hired professionals that do. And so they have put together a plan that was submitted to the engineering department here at the city of Pocatello, was approved, and then those studies and analyses go to FEMA. And we're in the late stages of an approval with FEMA to amend those floodplain maps.
Okay.
So we anticipate that'll happen probably in the next, you know, I say 30 days. I've said that several times, and it just, it takes forever. So we're a year into the process, and it'll probably take another, you know, several months for that to finally come to fruition.
That's all I have.
Okay, is there any other questions from the commission?
Thank you. If I may, well, and we can talk offline about this, but I am very curious about, about your opinion on, on the project itself, its viability, its validity, and so forth too. So, you know, again, we're, we don't live here in Pocatello. You know, I've done quite a bit of work up here in Pocatello, but I am extremely curious to know about how this type of product, particularly multifamily, is going to be received in that neighborhood. Because we just don't, we don't know that. We don't know the community as intimately as you do, undoubtedly. And so, you know, I've asked this question a lot, but I'm curious to know, are we crazy thinking that we can pull this off, or is this a, is this a valid project?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll ask the staff.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and Commission Members. My name is Will Claver, Assistant Planner with the city. Matthew Lewis is the planner assigned to this own map and Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. However, he could not attend and has asked me to give his presentation for him. A quick reminder that this is about zoning, not necessarily specific projects. They mentioned projects are flexible, and they're not in concrete until the plans have been submitted and approved. Even then, they can back out of them. So if, keep your decisions based off of, does any multifamily or high-density, does this make sense in this area? Jake Woodward of JW Properties has submitted a Zone and Comprehensive Plan MAP Amendment application to rezone the generally, the property generally located at 516 Riverside Drive. The subject property includes one parcel encompassing 3.03 acres, more or less. This request is to rezone the parcel from residential medium-density multifamily RMM to residential medium-density high-density at the north. And then the application is also to rezone lots 26 through 28 of West Pocatello Townsite from residential medium-density single-family to residential medium-density multifamily. Under the medium-density multifamily zone, the developer plans to construct townhomes, which will act as the transition buffer between the RMS zoning to the south slash southwest and the multifamily development to the north. A land swap, as discussed before, land swap was made between the city of Pocatello and the property owners in January 2023, specifically the east property line of the three-acre parcel extended to the center line of the river and also north into Sacagawea Park. The swap conveyed ownership of the levee with the walking path and the dyke to the city. In turn, the city conveyed 1.34 acres to the applicant, which entails the areas designated as public on the Comprehensive Plan map. Part of the application therefore requests amendment to the, from public to residential designation on the Comprehensive Plan map. Both the RH and RMM zoning designations would be consistent with the land use map designation of residential. There is a mix of residential types in the surrounding area, ranging from a fairly dense development associated with Oak Tree Manor manufactured home. While it's not intense of height, it's still very dense, as in units per acre. The three parcels in question are separated by either Oakwood Drive or Aspen Lane, which will help to provide a buffer in addition to required landscaping setbacks as part of any development. The development also abuts the river levee, which has paved pedestrian paths extended through Sacagawea Park. The developer will integrate open space, access, and pedestrian park and adjacent park. The property is located in the built environment, meaning adequate water, sewer, and utilities are readily available. Curb, gutter, and sidewalks will be required as part of the development. A portion of the 3.303 acres is designated in the AE floodplain designation. A conditional letter of map revision was completed by the applicant and subsequently reviewed and approved by the city Public Works official. The revision has since been submitted for review and approval to the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA. All property notice owners within a 300-foot radius of the existing property have been provided notice. Notice was also published to the Idaho State Journal on April 25, 2023, and two signs were posted on the subject property on April 24. No written comments or phone calls have been received up to this point. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you. Does the commissioners have any questions?
Yeah.
I do. Why, why is this property, if you can in a nutshell, why has this property remained undeveloped for all, for all this time?
Yeah, well, part of it is the floodplain.
Okay.
That would probably, that'd be a huge part of it. And there's also, before the land swap, it was just a weird shape in the city-owned property over here, but then the river was kind of isolating it. And so it's just kind of a weird, weird shape, which the land swaps helped create better. Otherwise, from that, I'm not exact, I'm not sure on other reasonings. Merrill, do you have any?
I mean, I'd like to answer, but I'll tell them.
Okay, Merrill will answer that.
Merrill Coyle, the Public Works Engineer for the city of Pocatello, the individual that owned the property for many, many years. He had different ideas and stuff. He never did make a decision on what he wanted to do with it. Therefore, it just sat vacant that way, and then he passed away, and the, and then it was put on the market and sold.
Okay.
So pretty much the private property owner that had it at the time, you know...
Didn't want to develop it.
He, he came in with different ideas that didn't meet zoning, didn't there, didn't want to put in the work to do anything, so these guys bought it and were willing to put in the work, like he said, the heavy lifting.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions from the commissioners?
There's maybe a question for FEMA. What's the AE designation stand for? Do you know?
I'm not sure on that. Merrill, do you know?
What was the designation?
The AE.
The FEMA AE designation?
Yeah, the AE floodplain designation.
The AE zones is, it's an elevation that FEMA's put the elevations on there that you have to meet that, and then with our, our code, you have to be two foot above that, the threshold, and all your electronics, your air conditioners and everything have to be, we meet the county similar to that, two foot above that. So say that that was 45, 65, you'd have to build, and that's where your base flood elevation would have to be, according to our ordinances, you'd have to be at 44, 67. So that's what the AE is. The AO zones are the, they'll give you an AO of one or two or three. So they give you a specific number off of native ground, but the E has designated elevations that correlate with the levee and the ground and everything there. So that's what they're going through, looking at that, changing a few things like that because there has been a lot of differences made with the Sacagawea wetland that's there with the flowing, and then the improvements to that wetland that has been made, kind of changed a few things there. So they're also going through that, and it is in the late stages. I know that, I believe it's in the public comment period right now, so is where that, that is in.
I have another question for you.
Yes.
So talk to me about the, the wetlands that is there. Is the city's intention to leave the, that artificial wetlands in there, right?
It's not an artificial wetland. It's always been a wetland.
It's a wetlands that's in there, a wetland that's shaped like a U, naturally occurring.
Well, you want, you want me to commit as to the city that was going to...
No, I mean, the city isn't gonna, there's no plans to remove that.
I thought we were gonna put in a, never mind, I'm writing a joke about it because it will hit the paper and be there, but no, there's no intent for, there's no intent for anything to happen.
There's no intent. The plan is to keep that.
Because it is there for some stormwater.
Sure.
It is there for overflow and has been, we put quite a bit of money into making that work and operational for the Day Street drainage that comes in and the overflow that goes that way.
That's my next question, is where that comes off of from Day Street?
A lot of it comes down here, the water that comes right down through Oak Street right here.
Mm-hmm, ends up there.
And, and down through there, that, that goes into that pipe and goes in there and diverts over before it gets to directly into the river, and that's what the pipe is, hanging on the bridge that goes across, and it diverts some of that water there versus dumping it into the river, and then it floods up and then goes in there naturally. So that's where some of the improvements have been made.
Okay. I know that the wetland that is over on, is it First Avenue, Second Avenue?
Yeah.
The one that's over there? It has a big fence around it. This one doesn't, does, does this have a big fence around it? It doesn't, does it?
It has a portion of it does, the one with the gates and the big of the, some of the, the deeper areas that we don't want people in, because if they get into it, they can't get out, but the other part is not fenced, but there's a portion of it that is fenced.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, please go ahead.
On the, you know, the biggest obstacle here is going to be working with the government on the floodplain. And since, since there's, you know, you're, you're purchasing the land, you've got a land swap, do you have any contingencies in place that you have to meet or you walk? I mean...
So this is for the city staff? So at this time, it's the city staff who has the answer.
Okay, whoever wants to answer that.
Well, it can only be the city staff.
Yeah, they own it, so, I mean, they're, they're in it no matter what. I mean, they might sell it later, but they're in, they, they own the land and they're committed to the project.
That's the point, contingencies. Any further questions from the commissioners? Okay, thank you. So at this time, we will hear public comments. Before starting the public testimony, I would like to remind each person, when you come to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to only address the commission, not the audience or the applicant slash representative. You have three minutes to testify and will be asked to stop when the time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns, or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. At this time, I would like to invite anyone providing testimony in support of the application. Then I would like to invite anyone providing testimony uncommitted to the application. Then I invite anyone providing testimony opposed to the application.
My name is Diana Brown, and I've never been to one of these meetings, so I'm kind of nervous. I live at 508 Riverside Drive, and we just moved in last August, the end of August, so we weren't aware of meetings or anything. I just want to know, how is it going to affect my property? Is the property tax going to go up? Or, we're just worried, because we're the only house right there, and we don't know what we're doing, so I'm just a little bit nervous. I'm just, like I said, concerned on how is it going to affect us and our property tax?
I believe the property tax is a separate issue.
Okay.
And this application is just looking at zoning. So the zoning changes would not affect property taxes.
Okay, because like I said, I don't know, we've never been to one of these.
The, the city doesn't control property taxes anyway. That's all done by the county.
Oh, okay.
But...
Do you have any concerns with regards to this rezoning?
My concern was just, there's a lot, lot of wildlife over there. We've seen eagles and stuff, and I was just worried that how is it going to affect the wildlife and the animals and everything, and if there's going to be a lot of traffic, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further testimony in opposing to the application? Okay, then at this time, we will ask the applicant to provide rebuttal to any of the testimony received.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming out. It's actually nice to have someone make some comments. I, unfortunately, I can't, I can't comment on what will happen with your property taxes. No one can control that, unfortunately. In regards to traffic, you know, we, we did talk a little bit about traffic at that community meeting, and we have not done any, any sort of study on what that'll do to the neighborhood, but as far as I'm aware, again, in conversations with the city and Public Works, the infrastructure that's in place now, roadways and so forth, are adequate to support our proposed zoning. So there shouldn't be much of a concern there. On the wildlife front, that is something that we're, we're quite sensitive to as well. In fact, we did an environmental impact study specifically for the wildlife, and I'd be happy to provide our findings in that report. So it's an extensive report where we had a, an environmentalist come and spend some time on the site and did a bunch of research about the different types of birds and animals and so forth that could potentially be impacted by specifically our clomer request and bringing out of the floodplain. And the report provides a lot of information, but essentially, in conclusion, it would have, it stated that there was no further action required. it stated that there was no further action required, meaning that there was no significant impact to wildlife that would warrant us going above and beyond what we're, what we're proposing. So, but I can, I can make that available if someone wants to take a look at that wildlife impact study that was performed.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for the applicant. So one of the reasons I asked about the, the floodplains that are right there is because it, it does fill up with water. And if you're planning on some kind of a apartment living or a townhome lane, you're going to get younger families that have smaller children. Do you have any kinds of plans to fence along that side of your property or do something to make that difficult to? I just, I'm bringing up a heads up on that.
Yeah, I know that that's not related to zoning.
I know that it's not about the actual site plan, but.
But I'm happy to comment on that if you.
I'm wondering if, because my understanding is this is a rezone.
Yes.
So, and then, you know, those questions, when those subdivision plats actually come up, then those, those, you know, we can address those questions then.
I am concerned though about, because this is a budding public land that does have, I mean, that's, it's a fairly deep channel there and we're asking to go, and I do think that's under the purview of zoning. We're asking to put in residential high density and medium density housing there next to something that could propose a danger to that on public lands and, and something that.
That'd be great. Thank you. I know those, those things are always a concern and that and, and, you know, we can't protect everything from everything, but there's no fencing and stuff required. There are standards that'll be in place for the slopes and that of the existing ponds and that. But if we, if we were so worried about all that kind of stuff and the concerns that way, then we shouldn't have put a, a pathway on top of the levee that's not fenced and you can walk down and fall in the river and so forth. So I think there's a, there's a fine line of what's, what's reasonable expectations and not. So when they build their stuff, as, as Rue says, that we will, we'll look at that as our standards and that. And there are slope standards and stuff to be put in place for stormwater ponds and that. So if people get in, they can still climb out, walk out and so forth with reasonable. I mean, again, we just read, we just read in the paper, you know, of a small child that, that had passed away, you know. So within reason and that, and then we need to watch after, after each other. So it's, I mean, I could fall on my head outside the back door and nobody, nobody put, nobody put a railing out to my pickup. So.
The other one is fenced.
Yeah. Well, that's the bit, that's the ponds than that. And the, and the reason that is pond there is because it does not meet the slopes and stuff.
Ah, okay.
So that's why I say the slopes.
Okay.
That we do have them so that they're met at three to one, four to one slope so that you can climb out, you can walk out and you can maintain the slopes. If it was straight up and down, if you look at some of the other ponds we've required to, that can't meet those regulations, then we, for liability purposes, we recommend that. But that's again, above and beyond our tonight's topic.
Okay. So Merrill, while you're there, just for a quick, if I can ask you one more question. So even the traffic concerns with regards to the traffic study, that will be a subsequent agenda.
This, the, the, the property that's there and the amount that they're going to put in there does not trigger an impact, traffic impact study. We'll do an analysis. There's not a whole lot. There was a, the other development on Whole West Bunch did a big traffic study in that. We know where there's issues with our own studies and our own stuff. And our residential streets, this always comes up, residential streets can handle a lot more traffic than people realize that, that they can. I mean.
The worst thing, you can just make them wider.
Yeah, if, if you, if you don't want traffic, then.
Leave the streets narrow.
Cars, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you very much. So. So I declare the public hearing closed. So commissioners, do we want to discuss the item or should we just move on to, directly to a motion?
I, I'm glad to see the property. It's, it's, I always thought the city owned that whole thing and I didn't know what they were going to do with it. So maybe the, make the wetman, wetland bigger. I think it is a nice place for, for development and I like to, I'm glad about the swapping that has happened because I think it's important for that, that greenway trail to connect. The more we can do that, the better. So I'm, you know, if anybody else, I don't know if they want to comment, but I can make a motion when they're ready to.
Okay. Any further comments before we actually take on a motion, discussions or comments? Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to recommend approval to the city council for the zoning and comprehensive plan amendment. Jack Woodward of J W Properties, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 17.02.170 of Pocatello City Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report and authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
Second.
We have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Phillips. Island, would you call the vote, please?
Hewlett?
Yes.
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 We, I did want to say, we can't speak to you as a council about our own thoughts about this, but certainly as individuals, we could talk to you after the meeting.
Great, thank you.
So this time, we're going to move on to agenda item number four, which is also a public hearing regarding preliminary plat file 23-758. This time has been set aside for the commission to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Nick Jensen of Sweat Equity Investment, represented by Stuart Ward of Diopatra LLC for the Jasmine Estates first edition preliminary plat subdivision application, plating 12.785 acres more or less into 35 lots. The property is generally located south of I-86, west of I-15, north of Western Skies subdivision and east of Jasmine Estates subdivision.
You have them step out and go lobby.
I declare the public hearing open. So at this time, we will hear from the applicant.
Members of the council, Stuart Ward with Dioptra, do you need address as well?
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
I am here representing the applicant, who is also here tonight, if you have any questions for him. This is the second addition to Jasmine Estates, which was recorded, I think, two years ago, something like that. To just east of, of Jasmine Estates, just under 13 acres. The proposal is to divide it into 35 single family lots. And it is part of a master plan of Western Skies development that was approved a few years ago by, by the city, which was Brandon Ratliff. This is division five and six of that master plan. But because it's a new developer, we did have to change the name from Western Skies to Jasmine. So we'll be working with the adjacent owner, who is Mr. Ratliff, to connect water and sewer to make that all loop with, for benefit of both the remaining, his remaining phases and, and this, the subdivision. The, the conditions in the, in the staff report, we don't have any, any opposition to any of those. And so if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Does the commissioners have any questions?
No.
Nope.
Thank you.
So at this time, we will have the city staff present on the application.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair and commission members. My name is Will Claver, and I am assistant planner for the city of Pocatello. Carl Anderson, sorry, Carl Anderson, who is the senior planner for the city of Pocatello, was assigned this preliminary plat application. However, he could not attend tonight and has asked me to give his presentation. The, the representative Stuart Ward has pretty much summed up a lot of what I was going to say. So in the avoidance of being redundant, I'll make this kind of quick. The request is preliminary plat approval for a subdivision to be known as Jasmine Estates Division One subdivision. The proposal calls for plating of 12.785 acres more or less into 35 lots. It's currently zoned R M residential medium density, single family or R M S, with a small portion currently residential medium density multifamily R M M. The location, as discussed earlier, and to put it in a slightly different term, is where I-86 and I-15 meet just south of there on that curve. All property owners within a 300 foot radius of the existing property boundaries have been provided notice of the public hearing in order that they may provide comments on the application. Notice was also published in the Idaho State Journal on April 25th and a sign was posted on the subject property on April 25th as well. All notices here and described have been provided at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. At this time, no written comment or verbal comment has, from the public has been received. Based on the zoning for the R M S and the R M M, lots one through four on the east side, which are called townhome lots, are eligible for single family or townhome lots. All other lots are eligible to be up to a duplex, so two units per lot. But they may, if they choose to do so, have one unit per lot. Staff finds the proposal to be compliant with all applicable standards of the city code 16.20, assuming the conditions outlined in the staff, staff report are met. And just to note, most of those conditions are boilerplate and we put them on all. The only difference, the exception being, one of the lots is, has to have an R for control of their stormwater. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you. Does the commissioners have any questions for the city staff?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you. So before starting, now we're going to move to public testimony. Before starting public testimony, I would like to remind each person, the same thing as I mentioned before. When you come to the podium, you must state your name. Please remember to only address the commission, not the audience or the applicant representative. You have three minutes to testify and will be asked to stop when the time runs out. Keep questions and comments pertinent to the application. Do not duplicate questions, concerns or comments covered by previous testimony heard today. At this time, I invite anyone providing testimony in support of the application.
Nick Jensen, Spring Creek Homes, 13104 West Tahie Road. We did what we're calling, it's not phase one, phase two, but Jasmine Estates or Dollestone. There was 28 lots there. We're down to six. As the town's growing, it, we're definitely searching good land and in good locations. It actually worked out great on, on this previous phase with Merrill because there was a problem down low that he needed to get access to help the sewer and water, I believe, situation. We're just continuing forward. As I move up to the east, Ratliff is also moving that way. So we're going to have to tie the sewer and waters in together. But just growing city needs more buildable lots. So here we are.
Thank you. Is there any further testimony in support of the application? At this time, then I would ask anyone providing testimony uncommitted to the application. Then this time, I would invite anyone providing testimony in opposition to the application. Okay, since the, there is no opposition, we will skip through the rebuttal. So I declare the public hearing closed. Is there any discussion by the commission?
This is pretty much exactly what I expected it to be when it was rezoned. This looks like exactly what, what we were told it would look like. So.
Okay. Any further discussion items or comments? Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the preliminary plat application from Nick Jensen of Sweat Equity Investments LLC for the Jasmine Estates Division One subdivision, finding the application does meet the standards for approval under chapter 16.20.050 of the Pocatello Municipal Code, with the conditions listed in the staff report and to authorize the chair to sign the findings of fact.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Hewlett and a second by Frey. Island, would you please call the vote?
Hewlett?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Arton? Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Yes. And this adjourns all the agenda items for tonight. Thank you.